We have got a number of excellents. All right, we're back on. councillor King, what was your question? The GM was answering your question about the process, yeah, weren't you?
Yes, I think I've answered the question.
Yeah. Right, are there any other questions? No, there aren't. Okay, so the recommendation is on, where is it? Page 80, I'm going to move.
I'll move, I'll second.
Deputy Mayor's going to second that. Is there any debate? You can debate now.
I'm not supporting this. We've established that, no, we've never been in a position to need to prosecute anybody apart from ourselves, which we couldn't do. We've established that Waikato Regional Council has actually prosecuted us. Looks like we're putting a bylaw in place to me to protect ourselves from ourselves. It's another bylaw for the sake of a bylaw, guys. Come on, wake up. We're not happy unless we're passing bylaws or spending money. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Any further debate? councillor McPherson?
Yes, thank you, and I thank councillor Chestman for the great little speech he gave when I was outside the door.
Okay, anyway.
I totally agree with councillor King. A bylaw is completely unnecessary, and I don't always agree with them on this sort of thing, but in this case, we've shown that they're adequate means of controlling serious spills into stormwater before. Why do we need to have another law, whether it's a bylaw or legislation of whatever, in place? We don't need that. It may well have been debated before, but democratically, we're allowed to debate it and I'll point that out to the general manager. We may not be able to ask questions, we may have to send it all back to people, but that is also part of the process, that we can debate this and we can send it back. It's not illegal to vote against this now. It may be illegal to change it, but it's not illegal to vote against it. We have been prosecuted, private people have been prosecuted, there are other acts that allow us to do that and to have the control, so that, you know, to just bring in a bylaw because it might fill a couple of gaps for something that may or may not happen in the future is not a good enough idea to go to the 16th, in my opinion.
Thank you councillor. Right, any others? No? All right, so that's been moved by myself, seconded by the deputy mayor. All those in favour?
Aye.
And against?
Yes.
Councillors McPherson and King. That's been carried, thank you. Right, page 100, item number 11. This is the dog control policy and bylaw adoption report, another long process, finally at the end of it. Hi Calvin, hi Liz. So you can take this report as read, and we have to do this in two parts as well. I'm not really flash on the process of how we have to do this, but anyway, it's the way we have to do it. So part one deliberation, you received 49 submissions, so are there any questions? Anything you want to highlight that particularly jumped out at you from submission?
No, in general, submissions were very happy, that they supported the policy and the bylaw, and had some really good feedback from the process that was run throughout the whole thing, which was good.
Okay, thank you. And councillor Tooman, you chaired the hearings here, and your chair's report is here on page 133. Did you want to comment any further?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to thank the Liz's team, actually, a good team to work with. From memory, I think we've got about 11,000 dogs in the city, it's round about that, and when we had a total of 49 submissions, and 34 of those persons actually agreed with the policy. 12 persons did not support the proposal, but of those 12, nine were opposed just to one park, and that was Hammond Park. And there was only two persons who had a general dislike of dogs, so I suppose out of 11,000 dogs, if two persons don't like them, it's not too bad, really. And of the six persons who said they were going to front and submit, there was only two appeared and four did not appear. And overall, I think what it is, is that there is a little bit of a fear in the community, I think, of a certain breed of dog, but I really don't think it's a dog's issue, I really think it's the owner's issue in most cases. And I know the off-leash areas, if you can't actually control your dog, of course, then you should not be using the off-leash area, that's my personal view. And my experience with off-leash areas is that the vast majority of people who use the off-leash areas, it's the same dogs all the time, the same people all the time, and as a result, of course, you know, you get good socialisation between the dogs, and also socialisation between the owners of those dogs. So, yeah, very rewarding sort of experience, this one has been. And I would just like to thank the other two elected members, which was the deputy mayor and yourself, who were on the committee, and particularly the deputy mayor who assisted me in the submissions.
Great, thank you. councillor Gallagher?
Question around the attachment for, if you just clarify, for Hamilton Lake Domain, new area to be used from 1st November 2017. How does that impact around the lake management plan in terms of, you know, conceptually, whether, you know, because presumably, the management plan may come up with a totally different perspective on that.
Yeah, so this will be proposed as part of the draft management plan, which will be released for consultation later this year, and we will submit submissions on it. I guess if there is strong opposition, being my understanding is council by resolution, can we change this by law?
So we're obviously open to dialogue around whether, in fact, as the lake domain evolves, whether, in fact, that area, particularly given it's, because that's, you know, the hill looking down with the amphitheatre, and there's lots of other activities that are involved in that, so presumably, we can have an opportunity to fine tune, is that...
Yeah, council can by resolution fine tune the register, but we can't completely change. So we couldn't take it out or add a new area, because that would affect the policy, and the policy under the Dog Control Act must be done through a special consultative procedure.
Yeah, and what, just help me perhaps councillor Tooman around the, you know, just appropriate monitoring, that, you know, we're tracking how in practice these areas work?
With staff, yeah.
You know, in terms of incidences, you know, because obviously, the best laid plans, et cetera.
We're certainly recording in terms of reported events, and also our own monitoring and patrolling of those areas, in terms of usage and incidents.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and to tick off process, part two, on the only changes you're indicating are taking out Hammond Park, and then there are some text changes on 106 and 107, that's it, isn't it? Okay. So if there are no questions there, I'm happy to move this for the doggies, seconded by councillor Tooman.
And I just also, sorry to interrupt, I know dinner's common again from 1st November, so there's, what I want to do at this meeting is flag, you know, a degree of, just reflection, all right? That we've got a major management plan, so I'm asking that, ensure with Sally and her team, that that management plan factors this in, because both of these proposals, once that plan is finished, may still, may or may not be a good idea, okay?
Great, thank you councillor. All right, I'm going to put that vote. All those in favour?
Aye.
Any against? That's carried, thank you. All right, item number 12, 135. This is the district plan management of bulk storage materials. Now, I understand, I haven't read it yet, on the council agenda for Thursday is the substantive issue around the tyres, so I would kindly ask the committee to view this report as, well first of all, I guess it's an overview, it came from the finance committee meeting, recommendation from them, and that, so it's an overview of the current process and how we deal with bulk storage and hazardous materials in our district plan, and also possibly looking at opportunities of finding new ways of dealing with these issues. So Luke, it says that the report we received, what are you wanting from us today?
To get some direction from elected members of whether or not I think there's a regulatory response for the district plan that needs to be investigated.
And what will that look like from, I mean, if the reports are received, what will that look like? You will go away, staff will go away and start looking at what responses might be? One of those things might be a change to the district plan?
Yes, the, I've made reference to the possibility of seeking the inclusion of enhanced controls for the bulk storage of materials through the appeals process. Failing that, then what I think would be the best option would be to canvass some options through a briefing session before tabling a report for council.
With all due respect, madam Chair, if I get on a point of process here, the recommendation only is that the report be received.
Yes.
So therefore, I would have thought we could discuss the items that are in the report.
Absolutely.
But what Luke is talking about now is something that was not in the report, that's not a proposal that there be any regulatory change, that I can see as being recommended. So it's, what I'm suggesting to you is that between you and Luke, you're narrowing down the subject area more than the report itself.
Yeah, no, sorry councillor McPherson, I hear your point, it certainly wasn't my intention, I was just trying to find out, because it is just a report to be received, what Luke wants from us, if anything, but I guess that will come out of the questions and discussion like you raise, so happy to open up to questions on the report to start with. councillor McPherson?
Yeah, look, right at the end, Luke or Brian, whoever wrote this sentence, it may have been, I don't know, Brian, the cost has now been carried by the city on two occasions. And the cost of the second one, because one would have hoped we'd learnt the lesson for the first time, was 250,000, I've seen also reference to 260,000 somewhere recently to the city, to ratepayers. And in the, earlier in the report, there's a sort of a mention, doesn't use the word threshold, but basically, it's saying to me, if I'm reading it correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, that once there were more than a certain number or area covered, I'm not sure which, by the tyres, the pile got too big, then it became a hazard, before that it wasn't a hazard. I'm not sure how that determination, whether it's just a sort of a colloquial way of using it, because if it, well, it obviously became a hazard at some point, according to staff, which I think is understandable, so, you know, who was doing the monitoring? If we on our property are going to allow a few tyres, and it's not a hazard, and it becomes a lot of tyres that is a hazard, where was the monitoring? Where's the overview happening? Is that property management services? Is that your regulatory team? You know, where does that responsibility sit? Because there was a cost, as you have identified, to the ratepayers.
Look, I think, you know, from my point of view, this is quite a difficult issue. There are different aspects that relate to it, there's a district plan, provisions that control bulk storage, of which tyres is one of those things, there's provisions under the Building Act which apply, they apply largely to the fire documents, so if materials are stored within the building that could potentially be flammable, then the fire document provisions under the Building Act apply, but they don't apply if those materials are stored outside. So if they're stored outside and there's a pile, it's sort of a call, I guess, on how big their pile is, and there is a threshold there. Exactly what that is, you know, depends on the context and the location. And what we're sort of saying here, we thought the requirement here was to come back, outline what the district plan provisions were relating to tyre storages, madam Chair, and that's what the reports done. But, you know, I fully accept that it's a difficult regulatory environment, the fire services have a role around this issue, the regional council have our responsibilities, and we tend to operate a responsive type monitoring arrangement, as councillors know, and that's largely related to the funding of our compliance capabilities. So we tend to respond when complaints are made, issues are raised, our people will go out and check things. So the report's basically saying that under the district plan provisions that have been largely in place for 20 years, that's the deal, and there's really no difference between tyres or plastic or timber, they are all materials that are stored in industrial zones as permitted activities. If tyres wanted to be identified as a particular item, the council wanted to take much more control over, then in my view, the way you would do that would be to do a variation to the district plan and bring in much more specific requirements that would apply to the storage of tyres.
But if tyres, I mean, if there is a threshold, even if we're not sure exactly what that threshold is, obviously, your report, we all agree probably that it was exceeded at some point, it's now, once they got to the full stack that was shifted, it was certainly exceeded, I mean, surely, someone has to point that out to the people that are storing it, point it out to the owners, to the lesses, that's us putting it out to ourselves, I guess. There has to be a process in place to do that, even without changing the district plan, because right, you're talking about the existing situation here, you don't need to change the district plan, it seems to determine that there is a threshold above which it becomes a potential hazard. And secondly, I would have thought, and I understand your point about responsive monitoring, you know, because we can't do everything all the time, but we had an extra responsibility, did we not, in this case, as the lesses of the property and the, we subleased it on, so it's not just like us monitoring what's happening on someone else's site, that was our site, and building, whoever leased it from in council must have had a responsibility to inform the people and to check that they were following the right conditions.
My understanding is that is one of the issues that's going to be discussed at the council meeting on Thursday, and is covered in their report. So our position really here was to talk about the planning environment and the rules that apply for the control of tyres, and really, I think the report covers that pretty well. If the committee was of a view, madam Chair, that a much tougher district plan response was needed, if you would like to signal that to us, and we'll start to do...
Sorry Brian, I'm specifically not asking for that, I'm not asking you questions about that, I'm asking you about within the current plan, whose job is it to determine that threshold?
Within the current plan, we will respond to complaints, that's our monitoring provision. If we become aware of a matter, or if a matter's brought to our attention, our staff go out and check it out, and if it's not complying, we take appropriate action.
When you say "we", do you mean the staff, your team?
Yes, in terms of it's a district plan compliance matter.
Okay, so if the owner, who is responsible for the site, has caused a breach, if you find such a breach after a report, then, and the owner in this case is the council, where does the responsibility lie? Maybe that's a question that should go to the chief executive, because it seems to me you've got property management leasing out property, and the, some thresholds have been breached, causing a hazard, causing a cost to the ratepayers, and each side saying, well, you know, one side saying, we didn't know there was a breach, and the other side saying, well, no one reported it to us, or, you know, by the time we found out, we told them to move, but it was too late.
Sorry councillor McPherson, you're raising some really good points, and I kind of, I'm feeling like we're doing this a bit back to front, I feel like, because this is a, this is us, I think what you're asking us is to look at a strategic direction for the future, to stop the issue from happening again in the city. We haven't really had the discussion, the discussion's coming Thursday, so I...
Well, I'm sorry, they're talking in here, madam Chair, about the cost to the ratepayers.
Yeah, no, I know exactly what you're saying, I think we're on the same page councillor McPherson, but I just feel like we need to have the, we need to have the discussion about the issue that the city was, is facing, before we start thinking about some strategic direction or possibly changing the district plan?
Well, I'm not asking for a discussion about changing the district plan.
No, but that's what the report is, the report's not talking about the actual issue and all the information that you're going to bring in, or that is in the Thursday's council agenda. It feels back to front to me, I mean, I don't know...
Part of the problem, madam Chair, I understand the point you make, and I've discussed it with the chief executive a little bit, the fact is that this is a reputational risk, or as was put to me by a certain manager, it's beyond the risk, it's an actuality.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're copping flack in public, we're copping flack from other councils, and we're, we seem to be pussyfooting around the issue, we're not actually focusing in on the issue, I'm not sure we're going to be dealing to it, every, within another two days, there's going to see more revelations, probably, you know, judging by what's happened the last two days. And this is an issue that we need to get on top of, not just react to. We've got the general man, this report was coming up, and the general manager that's most responsible for the reports being given isn't even here at the moment. I would have thought that would be required that he was here for this discussion.
So I want to respond in respect of, Sean Murray is currently fulfilling civic duties at the moment, welcoming one of the FIFA soccer teams down at Waitemo, so he's stepped out to provide that service, and that's something that's been committed to for a while, so unfortunately, Sean can't be here. In terms of councillor McPherson's questions, in terms of specifically, whose responsibility was it to identify whether or not there was an issue in respect of the quantum of tyres? At what point did someone raise the flag? Is that your question councillor McPherson?
That's part of it.
I can't answer that question without discussing that with Sean, because it was managed, the lease was managed out of the GM Events and Economic Development team, and without Sean here, I can't respond to that question. I can ensure that Sean is aware of that question for Thursday. I understand your concerns about time going by as well, but I can assure council, we've made councillors aware of the, all of the facts associated with this situation, and we've also briefed the media and provided copies of the open report, which is coming out Thursday, to the media as well, which lays a good part of this process out in front of them also.
With all due respect, Mr Chief Executive, we've been getting reports via the media of comments by local government staff and elected members, including the mayor of Taupo, that are not the same as the comments that have been given to us by the general manager. And, you know, we're not getting anything, someone is not telling the truth, basically, one way or the other, and we're, you know, as councillors, we're getting rung, some of us at least, and asked for our comments, asked what's happening, members of the public are asking us that, and we can't give definitive answers, because every time we say, well, this is what the general manager's told us, something different, or a different twist on it is coming up, with quotes, quote marks around them, some of them, including the mayor of Taupo's comments yesterday in two newspapers.
I'm not too sure how to respond to that, given the substantive reports coming Thursday.
Yeah.
I do have, the report is quite complete.
I've got you, Your Worship.
I've got questions on the report, can I ask?
Yes, I know, but councillor McPherson, have you finished your questions?
I'm happy that we don't, I'm not trying to settle things today, and I did say to the chief executive, I would like to air the questions so that they can be taken away and raised, so that, I can assure you that I'm not trying to force some sort of particular resolution at this point, I'm just trying to get it out in the open, some of the concerns. I mean, there are concerns, which I've already put in writing, relating to the, this particular company involved, which I'm not going to raise here, and the owners of it, principals of it, and things like that, which obviously are not relevant to this report. I thought some of these others were, but provided it's all dealt with, it may be both the regulatory side and the management side, if you like, if this whole thing is all able to be discussed on Thursday, then that will help.
Thank you councillor, Your Worship.
Paragraph 35, two occasions, I know of one, when was the other? And how much did the ratepayer pay?
First occasion, as I understand, was approximately 10 years ago. Exact figure, I don't have it at hand, and the other occasion is the one that we're currently dealing with, is in organisation.
Right, so we've had two occasions in the last 10 years, do we know of any others?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Now, did I hear you say, Brian, that we've had generally the same rules in place in the district plan for about 20 years? Did you say that? Okay. I note that the HSNO doesn't define tyres as hazardous substances.
That's correct.
Has there been any discussion at a government level? Because of course, it's legislation that government puts in place, and government defines what a hazard is. Has there been any recent discussion about classifying tyres as hazardous substances?
Not that I'm aware of there.
Have our local MPs contacted you and had any discussions with you about their role in advocating changes in legislation in relation to tyres recently? Not at all?
No.
No involvement by our local MPs on the issue?
Not with me.
Okay, just a lot of the debate in public is about generally tyres across New Zealand, and how you dispose of tyres.
Yeah, I think Your Worship, disposal of used tyres is a massive problem.
Big issue, isn't it?
For the country, and really, the ministry for the environment, for a long time, has been trying to come up with ways to manage the situation, so I think it does remain a major issue for government, as well as for councils as regulators.
You know, I certainly have been hearing that on the radio, big discussion about actually the disposal of used tyres, and there's no proper guidelines from the government on the issue. What I'm trying to understand then is, are there any councils that you're aware of that separate tyres out of the bulk storage of, well, hazardous, loosely termed, given HSNO doesn't include some of these things? Are you aware of any?
Yes, I am aware.
So which councils are those, and can they deal with it?
The ones that we've looked at include Hastings, Whangarei, and South Waikato District Councils. What was the second one, sorry? First one's Hastings, Whangarei District, and South Waikato, in that they have attempted to single out...
Tyres?
Tyres, and they don't make it, they distinguish between used or new tyres.
Right, and that's in their district plan, using just the district plan as the mechanism?
That's correct.
Who was the third one after Whangarei?
South Waikato, Whangarei, and Hastings.
So they've, now you said they've attempted to, just explain, I mean, what does that mean? Just explain what that means.
For example, if you, if you look at Hastings, what they've tried to do there is to set up standards around the storage of tyres, that essentially talk about the heights of stacking setbacks, and the volume of them in terms of cubic metres.
So that's getting to that sort of stage where they're okay with the small grouping, but once you get into a big thing?
Permitted activity, no need for consent up to a certain threshold, you go over that, you need a consent.
Right, okay, and then having to go through that consent process then enables closer scrutiny of what's going on?
That's correct, and...
And is that the way, so that's Hastings, is that the way Whangarei and South Waikato have also approached it?
They're similar approaches, but they have different standards, they're not all the same in terms, so for example, the volumetric standards that one council have are not the same as in another one.
And volumetrics, because this has been also an interesting debate in the public, and I didn't quite get on top of the final sort of details of, but I certainly understand it now, when you're talking about volume, you're not talking about numbers of tyres, you're talking actually about the cubic metreages of it.
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, because I think that's actually a point that's probably been lost slightly, because there's a big difference between 1,000 tyres and 1,000 tonnes of tyres, and those sort of things, isn't there?
That's correct, and because obviously, there's lots of varying types of tyres, so you have very large truck tyres, or very small motorcycle tyres, so a volumetric standard...
But that's why you go for those standards, because it's not really the number, it's the volume.
It's the volume of the material, irrespective of how many tyres there are.
So have Hastings, Whangarei, and South Waikato approached it on that basis then, rather than number of tyre or size, but more like volume?
Volumetric is one of the, just one of the performance standards they have used.
Right, and they put that through their district plan as a threshold for getting a consent?
For those activities.
To operate, if you're going to have large volumes.
If you exceed those standards, you need the consent.
Yeah. Just to give a little bit more context, has that been as a result of issues that have occurred in their sort of environments, like...
I'm unaware, I'm unaware of the provenance or the need for those controls, but I can't comment on that. I just know that they've got those controls in place.
Right, because I've been told a lot in the last week about how important tyres are for the farming community, because they use them for silage and for stacking in air, instability, yeah. So South Waikato, have they distinguished between rural land and urban land?
No, the approach that they've taken is to, so some, South Waikato includes tyres as a, just one particular item that's probably more generically dealt with in terms of bulk storage of materials.
Right.
And they single out tyres as one of those items as defined.
Okay. Getting back then to paragraph twenty-three, bulk storage of tyres is generally regarded as light industrial activity. That's kind of, I guess, making that distinction between a small amount of volume and getting into the larger volume. Is that kind of where that comes from?
No, it's more to do, if you think of the differentiation between a heavy industry, which includes transformative processes like foundries and things like that, where there's chemicals and.
Noise, pollution.
Manufacturing, et cetera, whereas a light industry generally is, can be considered as something that's less offensive in that sense. And the storage of tyres is an inert product that doesn't have any toxicity associated with it, and it just sits in the bay.
Yes, right. So the issue with tyres, whether they're old or new, is a concern about fire, is it, and visual pollution? Have I got that right? Because the tyre itself is not toxic.
Yeah, there's two.
Something's got to happen to it.
Generally, fire, potential fire risk.
Right.
And with tyre piles, if they catch on fire, they're nightmares. So they're really hard to put out.
Okay.
The second issue is one largely of amenity.
Yes, so visual pollution.
It can look like, they can also, if they're stored.
Excuse me, point of order, there, we've been told in the past that there's a chemical in the smoke that comes off tyres as well.
Yes, so fire, it's all fire related, big problem if there's a fire. All sorts of terrible toxins. So the other thing in relation to.
It's fire.
It's fire. Yeah, the other thing in relation to amenity, Your Worship, it's like, it can be unsightly if it's a great big pile, but it's probably more so for outside storage. Tyres can catch water, and they can harbour rodents and rats and vermin and stuff like that, because there's lots of little nooks and crannies to it. So there's a, there's that.
Or snakes, if we had snakes.
Yeah, so it's sort of a general amenity concern and a fire concern. The chances of them catching fire are pretty low, but if they do, they can be a big problem. And they're very, very hard to put tyre fires out.
Point of order, Madam Chair, was the last, the previous episode, the previous one episode, not a matter, where the fire pile did catch fire?
Can you clarify that, Stan?
Who knows that?
Yeah, it was. I, I saw it burn, and the fire brigade did put it out.
So, Blair, you've been here a while, can you remember the fire, the tyre fire?
The big one at Tarafa.
It was a big one at Tarafa, was it?
Yes, I can.
In an industrial area, was it?
I think it was actually in rural land near the dairy factory, out in that sort of area, Tarafa.
Where the Ponteira Dairy.
I'm sorry, it wasn't, it was in Maui Street, and it was shifted to rural land.
Okay, all right, that's good. All right, so just putting aside visual pollution and amenity issues, in terms of the tyre fire issue, or potential, which is the risk concern, I think, what led us, how's that managed or mitigated? Because the district plan can't do that, but there are of course rules and regulations about fire.
Building Act.
Building Act. So what is the Building Act? I see it's referenced here, but what exactly does it say?
So this is where it gets harder for us to manage, because the Building Act applies to storage within a building. So if you're storing tyres within a building, depending on the quantity, then you have to have different fire management provisions.
Because they're inside the building.
Because they're inside the building. So the bigger the pile, effectively, the more mitigation you have to connect. The Building Act, as I understand it, does not apply if the tyres are stored outside. So this is where it gets difficult to, to manage, and this is probably why a number of councils are looking at specific district plan provisions to try and manage it at source, rather than relying on these other regulatory, you know, avenues that are all quite hard on their own to, to bring to bear for the problem.
Okay, are you aware of any advocacy that the fire department has done either to the MPs, our local MPs, or to the government on making changes to the Building Act to enable them to regulate outdoor fires, tyres?
Not that we're aware of, Your Worship.
Right, is the government talking about any kind of help in that area?
No, I think, I think they've got other things on their mind at the moment.
Well, I mean, it's just quite frankly, the government seems very silent on the issue, even though all the conversations I've heard this week are all about managing across New Zealand and getting a better deal across New Zealand for managing that.
The, the, like I say, the, the management of used tyres has been a significant environmental issue for ten years, and it's been very, very hard to grapple with, and the government still hasn't made much progress in dealing with it. So it remains a real issue for the disposal of used tyres in New Zealand.
Can I also ask you, in terms of product stewardship, where is the current rule regulation debate on product stewardship, which of course would be hugely valuable in this regard? Any, any information on that?
Your Worship, my understanding is, is that under the Waste Minimisation Act, it talks about product stewardship, and talks about the concept of priority products, which are those products that would need better management that we currently have at the moment, but at the point of time, no items have been declared as a priority product under that act.
And that act has been in place for how long?
Since two thousand and eight.
And the government has done nothing in relation to that since two thousand and eight?
There are no priority products listed.
Right. Okay, so I'm starting to make a long list, really, of government advocacy, one would say. Okay, so getting back to the issue at hand, do you think, because the purpose of this report is to say, this is how it currently is, should we look at doing something? Do you think there is things of value that Hastings, Fungaray, and South Waikato have done, bearing in mind they are considerably different to us in terms of urban form, and et cetera, et cetera? Do you think there's things that they have done that might be valuable or useful for us that we could perhaps look at?
My view is yes, Your Worship. I think, I think we do need to have a look. If you put aside the, the, you know, the land use control issue, and you look in the last ten years, there's been two significant matters that have risen in the city that's cost rate payers a lot of money to deal with.
Yeah.
That alone, I think, indicates that a different approach might be required. Now, I'm sure there's lots of value we can get from looking at the three examples we've found. There might be some others if we dig a bit deeper and put some more refit into it, but I think it's certainly well worth us exploring that.
Okay, and just a final question. If we did do that, I'm assuming that we can't self-select hazard under HAZNO? No? Yeah, we've, we've got to run with the definition in the legislation, right? So we would have to pull it out, define it ourselves, and treat it in a different way, yeah, in the district plan?
I think, I think that's exactly why. We'd choose tyres specifically because of the characteristics we've talked about, as opposed to a pile of timber or plastic store.
And do we have tyre manufacturers or tyre, new tyre storage places? I mean, we do service a larger rural community. I mean, do we have any of those in the city?
Yes, Your Worship, we do. We, we have, our records indicate that we've got at least eighteen building consents related to tyre activities dating from nineteen seventy-three. And that includes primarily a range of businesses that their core functions aren't the storage of tyres, but the storage of tyres is a significant component of those activities.
But that would be like bow repairs and places where you go and get your tyres.
They do, they do store a lot of stock, which are new tyres. But we do have other things like car yards, et cetera. So, yes, but.
So looking down that list, Luke, I mean, those are what we would understand to be the functions of living in a city, you've got to go and get your tyre repaired. I'm looking at ones that are, you know, big type ones. Have we got any of those?
Yes, we do. We have, we have one, a retreading plant in a hundred and sixty Collins Road. Essentially would be the, in my view, the closest one that aligns with what you were describing.
And how long have they operated?
On that speci, on that specific concern, I don't, I don't have that information.
But they've got a consent.
It's a building consent, yeah.
To, to operate that.
That's correct, yeah.
Right. Okay, thanks very much.
Just before we go to councillor Gallagher for questions, can I just ask, and this is just me, I just want to ask the democracy manager, because I agree with councillor McPherson around having, he said, as long as all of the, all of the discussion and all of the issues can be discussed together. And again, I think this is the chicken before the egg here, but that's just, I may be alone on that. And this is just a report to be received. So what would the process be to have the contents of this report incorporated into Thursday's discussion?
Madam Chair, there is a report on the council agenda from this committee today, so I'm processing recommendations from this committee.
Okay, so they're captured that way?
Yes, so anything from this committee can go through to the council on Thursday.
So we wouldn't have to defer this report then, is that what you're saying?
No, it could just go through. If there's any recommendation from this committee today, it can flow through in my report to council.
Yeah, so, but, and also, so, I mean, the recommendation for management is simply that the report be received?
I mean, I've got some other things I would like to add to that.
Yes, and they could be referred through to the council on Thursday.
Okay. I'll just, councillor Gallagher, questions?
Thank you. For Thursday, can the Chief Executive confirm whether or not any member of parliament personally advised the Hamilton City Council, elected members, or its staff, to be part of the significant storage of tyres in the middle of Frankton? Please actually find the answer to that question. Can the staff also, and I think it'd be very helpful, that you gave a summary report of the situation that historically, I think, involved first of all, the tyre dump in Maui Street, and then subsequently, the tyre dump on the opposite, near the dairy factory, which was in the, I think, the Waikata District Council. And any Waikata District Council report or involvement, particularly in terms of the tyre dump that came to their area, you may wish to document a very heated argument that the former MP for Hamilton West had with Ministry of Environment officials, and including the minister herself, around this issue. More constructively, however, I think it's important that we do give the minister, the current Minister of Environment, and his officials, a bit of a right of reply. So I'm really interested that we actually get from the horse's mouth, from the officials in the minister's office, the work that the minister has done or, or not done, if that involves a partnership commission environment. Very interested to see what work local government in New Zealand has done as well. I think that would be quite important, because I think it's quite important that we do get an overall context. As a result of the situation that this council found itself in with regard to Maui Street, and also the tyre dump on its borders, did we at the time, and please produce the submission that we may or may not have made, to the minister or to local government in New Zealand? So that's giving us a historical context. Final question, which I want from the Chief Executive, is if you could give us some micro detail, and this relates to item, basically, you know, looking at risk and reputational damage. I don't think I need to ask you the reputational damage to this city that is coming from Taupo today as we join the magical tour of the tyres around the region. And trying to attribute blame, I don't think is necessarily the, the way to go. I think what is, is a collective, a collective trying to solve the problem. But what I do want to know from the Chief Executive, are there any learnings from our processes? And I want the exact micro detail, and what staff knew and did not know in terms of this council's decision-making process around the beginning of this story, and the beginning of this specific problem, in terms of the journey of those tyres into Frankton, all right? Why were we all involved in that? And I think that's, that's important. So that's what I would, I would like to say. If I can make some comment, I don't think central government, and I acknowledge central government's not actually covered in glory in all of this, I don't think local government is either.
Thank you, councillor. Your Worship?
So, Madam Chair, I just thought of all those questions when I read this last night. And I think it was really helpful the staff were actually able to answer them, because I just read through it, and those are all the questions I had. But I think the purpose of my questioning was to say that there's a little bit more information that needs to be summarised. And if I could ask that be summarised in time, hopefully, for Thursday? And I'm happy, as the chair of the meeting on Thursday, to receive that as, if you like, a handout or an email to us on that morning, you know, because I realise you've got to gather some stuff here. And as councillor Gallagher says, yes, I mean, there is more stuff needed. I just simply reeled those questions off, and I wanted to assure councillor Gallagher that, because they came to me as I read the report. And I didn't, of course, have an opportunity to Google and make my own inquiries to see what, what the other side was. But if you could make some investigation in that, because I've had people say to me that there has been this issue raised for some time with a request to get some changes to legislation, but it just hasn't made its way through this process. And I'm not being critical, councillor Gallagher, I'm simply saying, if there has been some general New Zealand issues on it, where's that at? It's not designed to criticise anyone, it's just that everyone's now talking about the storage of tyres. But actually, what I've been hearing is for twenty or thirty years, we've been storing tyres. You know, so, I mean, there's, there's some disconnect, I think. So if I could finish, so, I'm just, I'm happy as the chair of that committee to receive it, you know, on the day, because these guys have got to go away and put some stuff together, but I think that would be helpful. Thanks.
Thank you. Just, just on what the mayor said there about it being a really longstanding issue, I was speaking to the fire service as well, and they were, they're really interested in, you know, they've been fighting this fight for a very, very long time. So they want to be involved in any future discussions and any changes that we will make.
Rightly or wrongly, I think, I suspect that both the successive governments have dropped the tyres, so to speak. So this is not about saying the previous lot were good and this lot's no good. I, I think it's a very valid observation that more should and could have been done. But I do think, you know, being constructive, let's get all that stuff on the table. And I'm really interested genuinely in, you know, getting money for our sub for the local government in New Zealand, because I would have thought, in terms of, you know, the biggie, a big issue, big environmental issue. So I'm really quite intrigued as to, and I'm not wanting to pass the buck on to them, but I would have thought in terms of collective resource, I'd be really interested in the local government in New Zealand interface with, with agencies of government on this one.
Madam Chair, we'll try and get as much information as we can by Thursday.
Yeah.
Certainly through local government in New Zealand and Ministry for the Environment.
Yeah.
I just want to add, Madam Chair, however, I'm more interested in, in options for us.
Yeah.
I just saw the rest of it as context information. I'm interested in particularly what the other councils have done, and councils have done, and whether that were useful for us. I just want to know.
Yeah. Yeah, and of course, I'm interested in finding out how, for the future, sorry, councillor McPherson, how we can stop anything, properly stop this from ever happening again. That's what my, where my position is going to be coming from on Thursday. Councillor McPherson?
Madam Chair, the mayor is interested in what the other councils are doing with a view to what we can do. And I support that, and you're interested in how we can stop it ever happening again.
Yeah.
I'm interested in the ongoing problem, the current one as well.
Absolutely.
Definitely wanting that to be covered, and we'll be homing in on that, because this hasn't finished yet, and there is no guarantee that more costs are not going to come back on us. That's where I'm coming from. And it's already cost us quarter of a million dollars because we stuffed up, in my opinion. And, you know, we have, I appreciate, I'm not going to go any further on that now, but we, unless we address the current issues properly, we may face more costs now. And it's no good talking about what we might do in the future until we sort out what we're doing, what's happening at the moment, properly.
Well, Madam Chair, I just think it's quite important that the Chief Executive address a very important point raised by councillor McPherson, which is, Chief Executive, is there at this stage, any... chief executive, is there at this stage any suggestion that there will be further costs incurred by this council? Because it's just that councillor McPherson has raised that, and that is now being recorded by the media, and I think the chief.
I'm sorry, I raised that about two weeks ago, actually.
Oh, well, it's in public here, though, councillor.
And in writing.
So could I have my question answered then?
Yes.
Yep. Uh, so we, uh, at this point in time, though, there are no additional costs that we could incur. Um, we've had our contract for the removal of tyres reviewed and, um, the requirements against the contract, both on us is the leaking of the contract and as well as of the company responding to the contract have been met. So we have satisfied from a contractual point of view that we've, um, met all those requirements, so no additional costs.
Yeah, I I point out that in the leaky building situation, we were satisfied, we'd done everything according to law, and we've still been hit up for millions of dollars now. And I'm not suggesting it's going to be millions of dollars in this case, but um, the liability that flows out of something like that, when you can be in the, we are in the last man's, we spent a quarter of a million dollars because we were a last man standing situation on this. It wasn't our tyres, it was someone else's tyres, but it was, we had to get rid of them, and it cost us or cost the rate payers. Um, if that, the same thing happens over at Wahe, where they're stored in the quarry at the moment, and I have only got a temporary or a short-term consent to do that, um, and that was spelled out again, I think you heard the same radio programme as I did, Richard. Uh, they have to be gone by by August. The um, the machinery is not going to be here until November. Who knows when it will be operating? And given the history of that company, who knows if it will be operating? Um, what happens to the tyres between August and November, and that's the minimum period?
Chair.
Sorry, what happens to the top?
Just a point of order, chair, if I may, if I may.
Oh, that's all right. I'll interrupt you too when you speak.
No, I raised point of order.
What is your point of order?
I'll do the same to you, yep.
Hang on. So my point of order is, I think you gave instructions, you wanted us to talk about this report.
I did, yes.
You asked the mayor, that's, you asked the CEO that question about liability.
Could I finish? Hang on. And and which I think we've had some good questions on that.
Yep.
My understanding is you also said to us to save everything else for Thursday, but we're going to sort of collate everything in.
I did.
So that's my point of order. I'm following your instructions.
So so following your instructions, madam chair, was it that the mayor asked the CEO for a comment on liability? And then didn't like me also asking and making a comment on liability?
Okay, so, um.
So I hadn't finished, madam chair. You can rule me out of order, but otherwise I would like to finish, please.
What what exactly is your point of order, councillor, councillor McPherson?
No, it's not my point of order.
Hang on, everyone, hang on.
Sorry, chair, I've raised a point of order. I'd like you to rule on that, thanks.
Well, yes, I did. Just, just everyone, just calm down. Um, yes, I I mean, the point of order and what you s- i- is is my instruction to the meeting was, yes, that was correct. Um, I can't do anything else other than ask the committee to to to, which I've done, uh, to direct the questions to the report, and I thought we were doing okay with that.
Until the mayor asked the CEO for a comment on liability, and which he gave, and I'm I'm wanting to home in on a particular detail relating to liability, and that's what is going to happen if the tyres have to be removed from their current site. Who is going to be responsible? And is there likely to be any liability in that area? Um, we're talking about the future, not the current.
Can I just, look, I'm just trying to be pragmatic and sensible here. Um, and that's why initially I said I don't think that this report, well, I don't think this report should be here until we've had the wider debate, because inevitably I think questions are going to fall into, it's very hard to separate, questions are going to fall into that and the issue that we've dealt with over the past couple of months. So, um, are there any other speakers that have questions at this point?
I've sat here for the last half hour thinking I could make some observations, which I think you said I could, but now it appears I can't because.
Well, no, you absolutely can. I just want to stick to the report if possible. So we've had lo- we've had lots of questions. We've gone a little bit further than I think we should have gone with this report. We've heard from the democracy manager that the report will be included in the issues, because I just committee, I just think this is bad governance, the way that we're doing this. But we have the report, and it was a resolution from finance and monitoring. Um, so we need to deal with, uh, we need to deal with it, and we are. So, um, yes, councillor King, we will go into debate, but I need to tighten up on the the questions and debate. So if there are, are there any further questions on this report? And then we can move into debate. Okay, there being no further questions, um, I will move that the report be received. Um, is there a second, uh, councillor McPherson, you're seconding that, thank you. So, um, debate. I'm going to go to councillor King first, because he's been waiting.
Um, there is a tyre industry summit on the second and third of June, um, which I think it would be, um, it would be helpful for somebody from staff to go to. The Ministry of Environment's going to be addressing that, um, somebody from the Ministry of Environment's going to be addressing that summit, and um, it is a lot of, there is focus around the the disposal of of, um, old tyres. So I just think if somebody could note that down and look into that. Um, I I um, I don't believe that I've been kept up to date with what's happened over these tyres. We we probably should have had a daily email on this. Um, we shouldn't be reading stuff in the paper a- around the subject and and hearing it secondhand and getting phone calls about what we don't know about. Um, I I believe there are risks associated with living in a city, um, and we generate the waste. And we should take some responsibility and be in a position to store the waste and dispose of the waste that we generate to a certain extent. Um, let's face it, guys, every tyre that goes on a car, we, each one of us here wears two tyres out every year. It starts off at eight millimetres. We get rid of them when they're at one point five millimetres. Six point five millimetres a tyre, tyres went onto the roads, get swept down the drain and ends up in the Waikata River. So there there is a bigger picture here, and and we're quibbling over disposal of the cases which have one point five millimetres left on them. Just, just, I just think our cities generate in the waste, let's let's take some responsibility. Um, just talking this report of affecting people like plastic manufacturers, paper and wood. I mean, two of New Zealand's biggest plastic converters from resin into plastic are generated in the city. They're huge, huge businesses, supposed to cry back and convex, um, and if we don't separate out the tyres from the rest, once again, we're just making it harder for for other people to do business. Um, now, now, just don't forget here, this is our building. Okay, we don't own it, but we had the lease on it. We subleased our own building through our own staff, through our own department. I understand one of them's moved on. We got it wrong, and now here we are again, looking at either legislating, bylawing, changes to the district plan to protect ourselves from ourselves. It 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 sounds remarkably similar to the stormwater situation we've just talked about. So here we are, looking at protecting ourselves from ourselves again. Everybody around town knows that these guys were looking for somewhere to store tyres. There's no other landlord in town who would let them do it, but we did. So, and and now we're we're trying to legislate to protect ourselves from ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Okay, that's been moved by myself, seconded by councillor McPherson. All those in favour? Are there any against? None against. That's been carried. Thank you. Right, item thirteen, page one thirty-eight, this is the three HCC submissions. And you have, yeah, take, yeah, definitely take it as read. Um, and you did receive some councillor, elected member feedback on on these submissions, which is good. Um, committee, any questions on the submissions? There being no questions? Can I have a mover? Councillor, um, councillor Tooman has moved that. And seconded, councillor Young, thank you. Um, are there any debates? No, I'll put that to the vote. All those in favour? Any against? That's carried. Our regional roundup, operations roundup report, page one fifty-six, this is a regular report. You can take the report as read, hi Chris.
Yep.
Sorry, I know we're keeping you from your dinner.
Can you answer any questions?
Um, yep, so there's the transport, just if there's any questions on any of the reports, um, there's the transport from seven to point twenty-nine and civil defence from point thirty. Um, Leo, as chair of our civil defence subcommittee and representative on the joint committees, are there any burning issues we need to be aware of?
Uh, madam chair, I do have, uh, they're not burning, but I have some issues and questions, but I I think in respect of the lateness there, and I realise, you know, I respect the way you construct an agenda, you know? Because a lot of this stuff would be good in a different, on a different day, but, you know, early on, because there's some really meaty stuff in here, but I'll just follow up with Mr Chris.
Are you sure?
Around transport. Yeah, no, that's fine. I think I can do that offline, and if, um.
It was a heavy agenda today.
Then we can come back on that. Okay, that's fine. That's good. But I just, I do congratulate, uh, the the staff and 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 at least giving us a really good summary. And congratulate and endorse councillor Tooman and the mayor around, you know, and all the others who are on the regional bodies.
Thank you, councillor, thank you. Councillor Tooman, was there anything that you wanted to highlight? Are we safe?
I'm just waiting on councillor NZTA to come up with their speed management plan, which is sort of holding things up a little bit at present time. Uh, it's supposed to be out of July, uh, two thousand, this year, this. And once we've got that, we can start to make some more progress around the city, I think.
Right, thank you.
So, and obviously there'd be a process that comes back in here, because obviously that would have significant, uh, you know, I know a number of councillors, councillor King included, councillor McPherson, myself, we're all all indifferent, very interested in that. Uh, and also, that's a time, I think, to litigate a little bit of how do we improve, you know, moving on, you know, in terms of just the time and the process that we we go through in the board road safety strategy. But I realise not the time now. But but I I would ask, madam chair, that when that comes back, then obviously it's a matter of just telling, putting it so that we're all very crystal clear as to the process that we follow, uh, you know, on on that issue around speed limits, uh, given the, yeah.
That's the national one that councillor.
Yeah, but it's just how, you know what I mean, how we process that at this council in terms of what we're currently doing.
Yep.
So, uh, madam chair, we've got a briefing scheduled for early July, I think.
Okay.
Um, to come back to council and talk about the emerging national policy guidance. And following that, I think, um, we would, uh, council previously determined, let's wait for the national guidance.
Okay, yep.
And then we can sort out what we do.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Chris. Um, so councillor, oh, we'll just, can we vote on that one? Um, so can I have a mover for that one? Councillor Tooman and seconded by councillor McPherson. All those in favour? Any against? That's carried. So councillor McPherson has to leave, um, and that means we have failed as a quorum. And so we will push the strategic roundup report in the actions list, uh, to the next meeting. Do we need to, I need to re- resolve to do that? I do need to resolve to do that. So I'm going to, well, it does, but I'm going to move that councillor McPherson's going to second that. All those in favour? Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I did read in the standing.